Good morning, it's 8:30. I will call our morning's meeting to order looking for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
So the motion by Commissioner Wayland and a second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Citizens to be heard, is there anyone wishing to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers. Do they have?
Move approval.
The motion by Commissioner Haney to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. The minutes from October 16th are...
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve the minutes.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. Employee recognition, a couple of recognitions this morning. Kimberly, this plaque is presented to you with your report of admission for the 15 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much. Your new reporter. Thanks, guys.
Congratulations, Kimberly. We were fortunate to have Kimberly here as our new reporter, but long before that, she rose to her position because of her drive and initiative for Clay County. She thinks that we're proactive in our department, whether it's looking up all these procedures, digitizing a lot of the documents, all of the very beneficial things now. She's also our liaison from United Way, which she loves dearly, but it does take a great deal of organization to do that, so we thank you for all of your dedicated years here.
Thank you. Next is Kurt Nelson. Kurt, this plaque is given to you with great recognition for the 20 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to say that Kurt is an absolutely fantastic employee. He started off initially was a truck driver with Clay County for many, many years. He's very steady, he's very conscious in what he does. He's one of the guys you can really send out anywhere on any task and you know it's going to get done and done right. He especially takes good care of our equipment, which I really appreciate, so thanks very much for all your service, Kurt.
Item number two is a request for additional funding from the Clay County Collaborative. They're not here yet, I apologize. We'll move to number three, the request for approval of MINDOT limited use permit. Our county engineer, David Overvo. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I got a letter, or actually Steve and Colleen got this in the mail, but MINDOT's doing some changing and doing some additional language, wordsmithing, I guess, to those limited use permits. We brought this in, I believe it was, a couple of years ago. This is for the trail sponsored by the county and initiated by the city of Barnesville, and it's along Trump Highway 34 in Barnesville. And essentially, the language just talks a little bit about roles and responsibilities. Like you said, the county is the, is kind of the fiscal agent or sponsor of the project, or we were. Everything went fine. We do have an agreement with the city of Barnesville stating some roles and responsibilities and some hold harmless type languages. And I believe, like you said, this, the initial LUP was approved back in 2016, and they just made a few changes to some of the language, and I did run that by Steve in the county attorney's office, and I think he found everything to be acceptable.
Yeah, I think so. There were, I wouldn't say major changes, but there were some additions to the language, and I can, I guess I can point that out to you if you'd like to go a little more detail, but overall, I don't see any concern with doing this. Really, MINDOT sets the terms, and if we want the trail to be there, we have to accept MINDOT's terms.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions from the board? So you're looking at approval of both the LUP and the resolution?
Correct, yep.
The motion by Commissioner Gross to approve and a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion?
If I...
Yes, you may.
Chair, one of the things that did come out of the review of this between Dave's office and mine was that we don't have an agreement with Barnesville on maintenance of this trail. The agreement had to do with construction and who would manage the construction of the trail, but we don't have any agreement on ongoing maintenance. The understanding, I believe, was that Barnesville would maintain, but just wanted to point out that we currently have no written agreement on that, and I suggest that we take care of that. That doesn't have to hold up state's action, but that is something that ought to be done.
Well, I believe through conversation that I had is Barnesville has identified this as something that's very worthwhile and important, so if we need to further do some discussion to determine who will pick up that maintenance piece, we should do that.
Sure, just make sure it's clear and written down. And as I was looking through it and trying to share the information with Steve, I'm like, you know, this LUP talked a lot about maintenance, but our, kind of our agreement with them and with other cities like Holly, Glyndon, and Dilworth doesn't really specifically talk about that, so I wanted him to be aware so that in the future, when we do have those agreements for sponsoring future trails, I think we should get that listed in there just to kind of cover the county.
That's wise. Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Do you want to give a quick update from the meeting that we had last week?
Yeah, the workshop that we had? Yeah, so we had a county highway safety program workshop. Eric and I have been working with consultants in MINDOT on these. This is what they kind of call round two. So this was initially done eight, nine years ago or so. All 87 counties have a safety plan, and then there's federal dollars that have to be spent on projects that are listed in every county's plan. And our county being fairly straightforward, you know, we all, you know, a lot, most or majority of our roads are straight, north, south, east, west, don't have a lot of curves. We don't have a lot of qualifying projects that are in, that are typically identified in these safety plans, so I did kind of volunteer. It's a 20% cost share, 80% funded by MINDOT, 20% by the county, and it's going to, it's going to revamp our current safety plan, looking for additional safety projects and additional deficiencies and things, just to see if there's a little bit more projects we can work on. And we held a stakeholder meeting last week, and I, you know, it was a little, it was a little on the light side for attendance, but yeah, we did kind of cover, I think, all the main groups. We had townships there, we had the metro cog there, some county board representation, we had law enforcement. MINDOT was there with several people, and one of the transportation officials from the city of Holly was there, so Frank and Commissioner Mojo both attended, and I think it was, you know, might've gone a little bit long. Eric and I were talking after the meeting, maybe we could've tried to tighten it up a little bit, maybe got a little, a little lengthy, I guess. I mean, we, we like hearing about all the different things that go into a safety plan, but sometimes it gets a little much for the public, but I think it was good. We heard a lot of good things, and we tried to really specifically hear what people are seeing in different areas, whether it's intersections or segments of roadway that, you know, maybe could be improved for safety. And our, our safety and our fatalities and major accidents do seem like they're trending downwards, so I mean, it's a good thing for Minnesota and especially for Clay County, and we're just going to continue to, you know, keep finding projects that would improve safety in our county.
And I, I think it's important to note that there were two intersections that you did have a session on in the afternoon, the CASA 12 and CASA 52 intersection, and also the CASA 10 and CASA 31, which I believe there's some issues that I think you can help to make those better, safer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gross, did you have anything to add?
Oh, no, I thought it was a great conference, but how we looked at safety on the highway and stuff like that, normally when we say, are we a safe county, you know, we look at police work and stuff like that, you know, but we never really look at safety as far as all the roads and stuff like that. But I know one thing I thought of, you know, we would talk, these blinking stoplights, you know, and stuff, I mean, the stop signs, they got blinking lights, you know, the, you know, are they really good or aren't they, you know, so if you have one that's not blinking, does that mean that's optional to stop or not, you know, it's just, so it's just, you know, how do people feel about that blinking stoplight, you know, I mean, isn't a, I mean, stop sign, isn't a stop sign a stop sign? You have to make it blinking and stuff like that, so you say if you make one blinking, what about the others, you know? I know when I grew up, it was always, there's a white border, um, outside, it's optional. But, I mean, it was, it was just good, they brought out a lot of safety stuff and stuff, and I think it was a very good conference. And, I mean, like I say, probably could've been better attended, but I think some of the main people were there that worked with the safety, and that was good.
And when we put together our email listing of that, it was actually a little ridiculous. It was so big, we were like, oh boy, what are we doing here? So I'm glad we reached out to as many as we did, actually, but, so we tried to cover as many people as we could. We had quite an extensive list of people we reached out to, so. Did I miss anything, Eric? You want to touch on?
No, I think you covered the report. I guess one thing I would mention, probably the best thing takeaway from this county road safety plan is the goal is, once the plan is done, David and I can use it to apply for federal funding for safety projects, which we have. We actually just did one this year, that lighting project was paid for with federal funding. So that's the ultimate goal, is, you know, make our roads safer and get the federal funds to do it, so.
All right, any questions?
One other thing I had to bring out, the conference room over there, whoever designed that, it was great, great work, you know, it was really a good place to hold a meeting, and I would recommend that, you know, to county people, that's we have our meetings to utilize that room over there. That's just a very good room to hold a meeting at. I mean, the technology that was done there.
It was fantastic, because you'd be able to have monitors all around the room, and everything worked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the good part, everything worked, you know.
Yep. Had our fair share of technology.
No actual surprise.
Yeah. It was good.
Wait, Dave has jinxed technology at this table before.
That's right, I mark in the room every time I come here.
Anything else? If not, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, I'll back to our item number two is a request approval for additional funding from the Clay County Collaborative for the school-based restorative practices. Michelle Olsonowski, good morning.
Good morning.
Are you waiting for Amanda?
No.
Okay.
Just being myself today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so we sought out additional funding through the Clay County Collaborative to look at doing a pilot project to focus primarily on Horizon School, where a lot of our incidents were happening with youth. We saw that the process from getting a referral from the school resource officer for that, then to be sent over to the county attorney's office to review, and then being to our office to conduct our intake was taking some time, and so we looked at the thought of working directly within the school, so once an incident happens, we can be more active within the school system, and kind of limited that time of the process for the criminal justice diversion. So the funding is primarily to have the restorative justice coordinator be an additional 10 hours a week to focus on Horizon Schools. This pilot project would run from November of this year to June of next year, so kind of finishing out that school year. Our anticipation is the school is providing Amanda, the coordinator, with some space to conduct these meetings. So all of our traditional restorative justice meetings are held after hours at the family service center, so these meetings would be held within the school, where we wouldn't need to coordinate as much with parents and some of that kind of after-hours work. So I think it's a little more efficient for addressing needs within the school, and hopefully addressing things more timely, so if incidents happen, they don't keep, they're snowballing till now we have bigger problems with maybe individuals, two individual students, or even within staff and some of the students. So the funding would cover those 10 hours per week for Amanda. It would cover some of the supervision that I would do with the program, and then some training dollars. So again, this is really just a pilot project, so that we can look at, then maybe seeking out this additional funding from the collaborative for next school year, or looking hopefully to get some of the funding from Morehead Public Schools if we can show that the project is efficient and kind of meeting the needs of both our restorative justice and criminal justice system and the school system.
Okay. And I see you have a calculation worksheet on the back.
Yes, and so that is for the calendar year, so that increase of Amanda's hours went through December of 2019, but this wouldn't go through that entire calendar year, it would go through the June of that year.
Questions?
So what happens to Amanda after the end of this grant?
Yeah.
Does she just go back to 30 hours, or what?
She would. I mean, that would be our, our intent with this is, you know, if we can't sustain the funding elsewhere, or through the collaborative or through Morehead Schools, then she would go back to that 30 hours, but my goal between now and June would be to seek out and secure those additional funds. So we wouldn't maintain her unless we have, at the 40 hours, unless we have the funding to do so.
Commissioner Haney.
Michelle, this is targeted at 7th and 8th grade.
Correct.
Correct, and that is really within your bailiwick, essentially where you guys should have your target focused.
Yeah, it's where youth are more apt to, they can go through the criminal justice system at that age, and so we're trying to really divert them from the criminal justice system and try to address and really build the relationships that probably have been harmed because of the incidents that occur at school, and I think it's important to be a neutral party in the school, because we do have some youth or even their families that maybe have hard feelings from the school perspective, and so coming in as a neutral facilitator, I think has been helpful and will be.
Commissioner Campbell.
I, I think this is great. I, you know, I think, I think we need more of this.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I hope too that we can, at some point in time, even focus on the even younger.
Yes.
Right? I think that still is a goal we have to ultimately get to, is even getting them younger to, but I, I like this. I think this is, I would think, Commissioner Wayland, you being with your law enforcement background, would think that this would be...
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, and I'd make the motion to approve.
Yes, I got it.
A motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve and a second by Commissioner Campbell. I will just speak from the parents' perspective, having a 7th grader at Horizon, the email that went out last week to explain that this is something that is going to be implemented, just as you say, try to, you know, address the issues before it gets out of hand, but here's the connection. One, it's a fantastic presence for Clay County, but two, the real issue is that I think you are going to be able to address some needs before they get way out of hand, and I think the dollars that it will require to do this in the long run, the amount of time that you'll save staff-wise, and then also, unfortunately, if there needs to be some sort of treatment or hold, is significantly less by investing this.
Yeah, and it was ideal. I mean, I think the school that we were focused on, the principal and assistant principal were very much on board, and the superintendents as well, so it's been just a good partnership that I think will hopefully show the need and the results, and then we'll be able to continue funding hopefully through the school system.
Yeah, okay, all right. Any further questions? We do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Michelle, for your work. Item number four is a request approval to use internal service funding to replace the virtual service host infrastructure. Tim Dent, good morning.
Good morning. So we've got some aging equipment in our data center that runs all of our virtual servers for the entire county.
Do you have a sheet?
Yes.
Okay, all right, go for it.
Okay, yeah, so like I said, some of these existing servers are six years old, and we've had some, some problems with them, and we would like to replace them before they completely fail. Originally, this was going to be a 2019 project. The reason we're moving it up is we've been getting information from both our vendors and manufacturers that there's going to be some large increases because of tariffs.
Okay.
This year and next year to approximately 35%. So if, by ordering them this year, we could approximately save $20,000, $25,000 from purchasing these, so.
Well, this is something that we, as you said, knew that we were going to need to do, and I think it's a necessity for sure, and I appreciate the fact that you're looking forward to see how you can save the counties some dollars. We recently did this with the sheriff's department and their squad vehicles, and so I think it, you've definitely proven why it would be needed.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. And then your next item is the request to approve the unpaid leave of absence in your department.
Correct. We have a computer support specialist who started in June, who is out of maternity leave right now, and she has accrued enough time to take roughly three weeks paid, and the rest we're requesting unpaid.
Okay.
Move approval.
A motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number six is a request approval of Resolution 2018-37, assigning county administrator Steve Larson as the acting fiscal agent for the...
Lord of command, chair of commissioners, as you, as you are aware, this board acts as a sponsor for the Clay Trail Alliance. When they received the grant, two-year grant from the Minnesota DNR, this board signed a resolution for Administrator Berg to act as the fiscal agent. The only thing we have before me today is changing that from Administrator Berg to myself, so that is the request.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the request by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carries. Thank you. Committee reports, we do have the last two weeks, so we'll go back to 31st of October, or no, 23rd of October. Commissioner Campbell.
Okay, I'll start with the, I think I reported that we, oh, we had the greater Fergom Board Economic Development thing on Tuesday we all read. So on the 24th, we had the Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting in Purum, and the majority of that discussion centered around budget issues. The plant itself is doing well, and we are going to be holding a budget meeting on the 19th, and hopefully get something finalized on that language, too, that we have been, we've been, there's been a little bit of disagreement on the language, on the, on the waste delivery agreements by each member county, so we're going to try to get that ironed out. That afternoon, I was back in town for the public outreach meeting, and we discussed a little bit more about, about what had taken place, that the land management meeting the month before that, where we need to do a better job of letting landowners, especially the newly, the ones newly impacted by Plan B, give them a better understanding of the process. So we're working on a, on a way to, I, we can't do that fast enough as far as I'm concerned, but, but that was the focus of that discussion. And on Thursday, the 25th, in the morning, we had the solid waste advisory meeting, and primarily what we had there was we had the two candidates who had put in presentations for the landfill construction. They came in and gave a high-level review of their proposals to the full SWAC committee meeting, and the SWAC then discussed it, and I think there's, there will be a recommendation coming before this board pretty soon on that. And then that afternoon, we had the diversion authority meeting, and again, this time of year, there's not a whole lot of activity taking place. There was, there had been no land management meeting. They went over some of the projects that are still in-town levy projects and stuff that are still be worked on, being worked on during the winter months. And on Friday, we had the District Four meeting in Fergus Falls, and I thought that was, I had to leave a little bit early, but I thought that was a good meeting. It was interesting to see how, what the other counties did with their preliminary levies. I think we're kind of in line with what most of them did, maybe, maybe even towards the low side of what those other counties did. And I'm sure each of you can have something else to report on that. And then the, on Monday, the 29th, in the morning, we had the West Central Juvenile Center update, and that is going well. There's no major, major issues there. I know they're, they're looking at that office stuff being, it's ready for them to move in now, this week or next week?
Yeah, next week.
Yeah, next week. And so once they get in there, then they can start demolishing the remainder of that first floor there to get fully into that renovation. That afternoon, we had our jail and law enforcement center. I say jail, it's our correctional facility. And again, the, the LEC is pretty much done. There's really not even any punch list issues left on that one.
The only question I have, I remember before Brian Berg left that the Klein-Lucarthy was going to donate a flag. Has that been done?
I don't know what the status of that is. I, we can certainly check on it. I think, I think there was supposed to be something that was going to be put up there.
Some sort of dedication flag, I didn't know. We needed to follow up.
We can, we can, Stephen can follow up on that. As well as there was going to be, I did ask about, we had, you know, roughly 80-some people who spent a lot of time working on this in its early, early phases, when it came to the planning and all that, from the public, and we're looking at little keepsake memento things for them as well. That's being done by construction engineers, and I think they've ordered those individually for the people, so, so hopefully we'll see those soon as well, and so thank you for that. Then in terms of the Phase 1 of the jail, there's, you know, we have a, kind of a small punch list of items yet to do there. It has, some of it has to do with doors and detention glass needing to be replaced, and there was an issue with some exterior lighting controls, you know, some small things, but that's, those should be done pretty soon. As you're probably aware, last Wednesday, the annex building went down, so that is gone, so making way for Phase 2, and I think it's next week, the plans are to start the demolition of the old jail and law enforcement center, and that will be about a three-week process from start to finish, once they do that. Then on, we did have a, we had another SWAC meeting that Tuesday morning. We met, again, to go over some of the stuff that these presenters had done in preparation to make a recommendation here. Then on November 1st, Thursday, November 1st, we had the Clay County Joint Powers meeting, and we had a presentation by Jennifer Holtz on Navigator for Addiction through First Link, and then we did some more finalization on our agenda for the Intergovernment Retreat, which will be held on January 25th of 2019, and that's going to be at the law enforcement That same day, later in the day, we had a community facilities task force meeting, and we had the, Moritz Schools were present, Clay County was present, the city of Moritz was present, and the city of Moritz invited Dilworth to come to that meeting, so, you know, from the Moritz Public Schools, we learned about, you know, the, the projects from the 2015 bond are now complete. They have a high school task force going out there right now that they're looking at some issues there. They're concerned about, they're monitoring the K4 population capacity. They're thinking that in the next couple of years, they will exceed the 3,000 capacity of students at that K through 4 grade, so. from the 2015 bond are now complete. They have a high school task force going out there right now that they're looking at some issues there. They're concerned about, they're monitoring the K-4 population capacity. They're thinking that in the next couple of years, they will exceed the 3,000 capacity of students at that K through four grade, so it shows to the growth that's going on, too, I suppose, so. Then the city of Morehead, they gave a report that they sold ushers, and they're, well, there's conversations about the sports center in the school district, maybe taking that over. They're looking at a new dog park in South Morehead, and a new library, and they're looking at a potential new city hall. So that's what's on Morehead's agenda. And then they all talked about some legislative priorities, and Commissioner Mojo and I gave updates on the projects that we're well familiar with here in Clay County, so. Okay, that was two weeks, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. On the 26th, I attended the Fall District AMC in Fergus Falls, which Commissioner Campbell just gave a report on about levies. One of the things that we discussed at this meeting that was also discussed at Arrowood in September was the potential loss of $80 million to the state when the 2% healthcare provider tax sunsets this year. That's going to be a really very large chunk that we're going to have to deal with, and the recommendation is that we renew that provider tax, although it's got severe, or some serious opposition. But, and that will be very important to us, as will be the opposition that the counties are having to the idea of cost shifting from the state to the counties for mental health care and all that, so. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross, welcome back.
Thank you. I guess before I left, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District, the buffer, the head thing on the buffer thing. Probably you reported that back then, and so won't cover that again. The Highway Safety Conference, October 31st, which was held, which we already discussed, that Dave already told us about. November 1st, I went to the, probation office has a new office that we kicked them out of the, not kicked them out, we removed them from the annex or something like that. What's the right word?
Reassign. Reassign space.
That didn't sound very hospitable. But they really came up with a, I don't know if you guys went over there.
Yeah, I was over, it's beautiful.
They came out with a very good space over there, and they're looking good over there, so I think they came out okay on that one. Friday, Partnership for Health, we had a meeting, and, you know, they've done so many things, you don't hear so much about the Partnership for Health, was one of those that operated in the background and stuff like that, but, I mean, if you look at all the grants that they bring in here, you know, the four counties, $6 million in grants bringing into the four county things, you know, and that, I mean, that's a lot, you know, so what do they do with that money, you know, and there's different things that I told, you know, probably a good presentation once of what's going on and stuff like that. I mean, one of the things that they really discussed on was what they do with new mothers, you know, as they get their babies and stuff like that, you know, they work with them. You know, you probably think, why, why do you have to work with them? But if you start them outright, you know, it's gonna, later in life, it's all gonna help out, so. There's so many good programs in the Partnership for Health, I was just, you know, once you start going through them, which we were reviewing, it was really a good, it's a good program. They went over the audit, they had a good audit, and like I said, the grants, it's just a lot of good things happening there, and they may come across the board to have a meeting here and just tell us what they're all about and stuff like that. Yesterday, I went to Fergus Falls for the West Central Initiative, and we just had a tremendous speaker there, Winchester, Ben Winchester. He is just a dynamic speaker, and if we have the small cities thing once, we should bring him in there. I think he costs around $275, he said, for you to bring in. And he was talking about, you know, housing, he said, you have housing and stuff like that. He feels like there's plenty of housing here, it's just that our senior citizens are still living in it, you know, I mean, you've got so many houses where, you know, people, as they get older, you know, they want to stay in their own house, you know, they've got a four, five-bedroom house, and there's two people living in it, you know, and so they feel that there is plenty of housing, it's just that we've got senior citizens living in there, so what should we do? You know, we should probably come up with more senior citizen housing developments and stuff like that, you know. I mean, he's just a dynamic speaker, really, he really put a different light on housing and stuff like that, you know, he feels, do you need more housing? No, you got it. You just got to reassign it, you know, it's just so. But next time, we have a small cities, I would really recommend getting him in there and talking to him about it. I mean, he gives about an hour, it's an hour presentation, probably lengthy for the small cities, I don't know, but I think it's a good way for people to look at their towns, you know, like people in rural areas are, you know, a lot of times we think, what is bringing people to the rural areas? Is the, they want to get into the rural areas and stuff, is, are they going there for jobs? And you say, no, they're not going there for jobs, they're going there for living there, you know, because driving 20, 30, 40 miles to a job nowadays is, normally, and if you live in Minneapolis, St. Paul, you know, you take a 40-minute trip to get to work, you know, so that's normal for some people, so it's just, we got to look at things differently in the rural area, you know, and stuff, so. But that was a very good conference again yesterday, so. And those were my meetings, thank you.
Thank you.
I could get into Italy if you want to talk about it.
Yes. Commissioner Whelan.
Let's see, I had the Prairie Lakes and a couple solid waste meetings. I thought the SWAC meeting we had, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting, was very helpful in coming to some resolution on who we would select for the construction project at the landfill, so. A lot of people that have served on that for a long time and provided a lot of insight, which I found very helpful. Had the diversion meeting, I think Commissioner Campbell already reported on that, and attended the District Four meeting in Fergus Falls. I thought that was a good meeting, and it's always interesting to hear the county, the reports from counties on what they have doing, and I think we were pretty much in the ballpark in terms of our levy for 2019. Fewer, higher, maybe a few lower, but everybody was kind of in that same area, so. That was it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
I wanted one more item of interest. The Wild West Watershed Board, they're looking to build in the new building, and they started out by just renovation, now they're looking at new buildings and stuff, and they went from 150,000 or something like that, 200,000, now they're up to 450,000, so, you know, we as a board have to let our representative, Dwayne Erickson and Mark Harless, know how we feel about that. I want to try and get some more information on that, because they're going to vote on that, I think, next week, so. We have to get together, do we want our representatives to vote for that? Because it's going to be an additional $400,000 debt to the Wild West Watershed Board, so.
Well, I mean, it's an interesting, remodeling obviously is expensive, and I think Buffalo Red realized that having a new building worked well for them, so you're more astute to what's going on with their financials than you have the rest of us, because you're a liaison to that board. What, have you talked to?
I've talked to Dwayne, yes, and he's very, he's very concerned about the extra fund and how he votes, you know, that, what he wants. I know what his feelings are, and if he votes that way, you know.
Are they out of space?
Are they out of, I guess they feel like they are, so they want more space, the more, bigger conference room and stuff like that. But I'll get together and get some more.
Why don't you do a little research on how we, what our involvement was with the Buffalo Red when they redid theirs. I know they came to us for a special watershed tax.
No.
And I think that was over a couple of years or something, if I remember.
Yeah, I mean, it's paid off now.
Yeah, it's paid off, but certainly if they need it, you know, it's.
Yeah, I'm finally getting together with Kevin Ruud, or talk to him and see what his feelings are and stuff. Okay.
All right. Commissioner Gross, was that, or Commissioner Whelan?
He's on.
Okay, thank you. Two weeks ago, I had a conversation regarding the one watershed, one plan with Bruce at the watershed, also Kevin at the SWCCD. I've had numerous discussions over the last two weeks, both with our administrator in regards to the county attorney contract. I have had phone calls with the small city representatives, Barnesville and Holly as well, so that's taken up a lot of time. I had a discussion, a meeting at Lakes and Prairies discussing the building and Breckenridge that they moved forward on purchasing to have a base out of. That's been a great thing to have a presence in Belsley and South Morehead, and they're hoping that having that same presence in Wilkin will be important. I attended the highway safety plan, it was a great meeting to offer some feedback. I agree, it did get a little technical for the non-engineers in the group, but I think to look critically at the intersections that we do have in Clay County that are troublesome. Sometimes, I understand it's the, towards zero deaths, look and make sure that we're minimizing those occurrences, but also I think it's important to look at those high-frequency crash areas, even if they're not severe, to see how that we can do better. And when I drove home about a month ago from a trip and came across the lit-up stop sign by Comstock late at night, it really helped, you know, if you get in the zone and you're driving, it helps catch your attention, so I think that those efforts are good. And also, I want to note that the planning and zoning director started last week, so it's great to have her on board. She had planned to come to this board to introduce herself, but she is a judge for the election today, so she'll come next week. And I also attended the Community Facilities Task Force for the Morehead area in Clay County, and nice to see Dilworth came in as well. I'll also note that Morehead is thinking that they are under the 300-seat capacity, and so they did build for growth, and that's quickly being consumed, so that...
3,000.
Right, but that's the 3,000 level, but 3,000 seats.
Okay.
And we did talk about workforce development. As we've noted, we're having a hard time finding employees. The city of Morehead is having a hard time recruiting police officers, and the schools are having difficulty in terms of bus drivers. They're critically short, and paras, and as well as the subsystems, that's another issue. And another item of note, the city of Morehead is, as they're looking at all their building needs, they are tasking Maureen at the Historical Society to look critically at what their growth issue is, and I think the city of Morehead would like to use that space elsewhere, and so Steve has a meeting with the Historical Society in Morehead coming up, and Frank, since you're on that, I think it's important that you stay a part of that discussion to keep us in the loop, because just this one board member, that is something in the Historical Society that I think is very critical to Clay County, and I know that all of our school kids use it as well, so I think it's important to continue to have that in the area. The other, that concludes my reports, but I do want to make sure that we add the Township Association meeting on the schedule, as you probably all got that. That meeting will be November 19th at the Dilworth Community Center.
I'm sure, while we're talking about the schedule, too, on the back page, I think we have a, that's the Truth and Taxation Board meeting, it says Tuesday, December 6th, I think that should read Thursday.
Yeah.
So we can, if we can correct that.
For which one?
The Truth and Taxation.
That's Truth and Taxation. We have a county board meeting at 5:00, and...
So we'll make sure we make those changes. Otherwise, that concludes my reports. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair Commissioners. On the 23rd, throughout the last couple of weeks, I've had a number of phone conversations with Klein-McCarthy in regards to the grant opportunity that we've discussed here at the board. On the 24th, I participated in the Emergency Operation Center drill at the new law enforcement center. They did the testing of their new code red system, and also set up the EOC for the first time there, and then they spent the afternoon talking about different scenarios that they potentially faced. I think it was a great reminder of the terrific collaborations that we have between the counties and the city departments, and state and our community partners. I had a number of conversations this week, or this last two weeks, with the city of Morehead in regard to the legal contract. I also spoke to representatives from the small cities. On the 25th, I attended the Solid Waste Advisory Board, that's been covered in detail. On the 25th, I also had a department head evaluation. That afternoon, Lori Johnson and I met with Joe Rosso from the Greater Fargo Morehead Economic Development Association, and talked a little bit more on workforce. I also participated on that Friday at the AMC district meeting. I think that in our county reports, we talked a great deal about the workforce issues. Fortunately, we dodged the insurance issues that some of the counties did face this year. We talked about the drug problems that they're facing, the impacts on their budget. I think this, this last week, they came out and on the national level, it said last year, 72,000 people died from opioid overdoses, and so certainly that, we've seen that impact here in our counties. And the average levy right now is about 4.71 for the counties that reported, so we're, at Clay County, we are under that at 3.64. We touched on some of the legislative priorities moving forward that AMC is going to be looking to push forward. I did send the commissioner some information on the impact at losing the funding for the residential services funding that would, how it would impact Clay County. Roughly, in a two-year process, roughly over $420,000, and then I just had Ron to run some information for 18, and we're over $80,000 through September this year. So certainly that would have an impact, and hopefully AMC will be able to push that forward. And just touching on the sunsetting, sunsetting mandatory state healthcare provider that Commissioner Haney discussed, I also just want to touch on that because the partnership is funded through there, and so Commissioner Gross spoke of some of the positive impacts. I can tell you from my job at the juvenile center, it was extremely impactful. We had funding that came in, and professors from local colleges came in and changed how we do our recreation program. We also were able to receive funding for different cognitive behavioral programs through their motivational interviewing, and so they certainly, and again, they've also provided funding for different activities, recreation equipment, things like that, so they certainly have, just in our little area there, had a huge impact. So those things will be moving forward from the district meeting from AMC, accumulating all of the district's feedback and finding out what those legislative final decisions will be in December. Participated in new employee orientation on the 29th, owners' meetings for the juvenile center correctional facility in LAC that have been well addressed. Participated in the county roadway safety planning meeting. First, also, the joint powers, county management, and I think one of the things that county management addressed is, I've been on the board and I'm a committee now for about nine years, and the amount of things, not that you guys aren't aware of this, but I think the amount of things that are happening, not just because of the projects that we have going on, but the amazing things that our department heads are doing, I think is important. And what I've asked them to do, a lot of times when they come through and give their annual update, we're talking budgets, and I think sometimes we'd like to have them come in just to kind of share some of the positive things that are happening in their departments when they're not asking for money, telling you what the good things they are doing with money that you provided. So I did stop in at the DOC open house. I know that for them, that's what they have, there's nothing that we could have provided them that meant their needs on the campus, and so I think it's a, they have a nice training facility, good office space, and so that'll be nice for them. I participated in the Community Facility Task Force, and also just a couple more things, just want to touch on the Minnesota Department of Revenue Board of Appeals. Nancy is, Nancy Gunderson has sent an email out to this board and a number of representatives from the county. We do need to have one member trained by February 1st of next year. Currently, the representatives lapsed in July, and so you have that link if you could let me know if you're interested. Also, with the elections today, Lori is looking for two representatives for election canvassing on Friday, 11 o'clock here in the boardroom. Because Commissioner Mojo and Campbell are on the ballot, they are not able to participate, so we're looking for two or three remaining to hopefully participate.
You're putting me down without a time.
Okay. And that concludes my report.
But you need to, so.
We do need to.
Look at your, the time that...
What's the timeline?
11:00 AM, it's only 30 minutes.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Is there anything else, Steve?
Well, Madam Chair, I just want to echo the comment that you made and that Steve Larson made about the time that's been spent considering dealing with the city prosecution issue, and I, on behalf of the office, I thank you... of the office, I thank you, and I thank the other Commissioners who have worked on it and continue to work on it, HR as well. I know, we appreciate the outside support, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Anything else? No, we adjourned.